Morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. Get going. First order of business is adoption of the agenda.
I'm going to move to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of adding an agenda item to buy a two-way radio for the ACO vehicle under our section RCC eight A. Seconded?
Moved in second. There was another item also. There was Michael.
What's up, Lee?
Well, I sent the thing out about the condition of the van, but that was already in the earlier discussion.
Okay, I thought there was...
The door?
The door.
The what?
Oh, the door for the GLA.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Move in second.
Well, there was an email sent.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. I'm looking for it now.
We need the door fixed.
Door replacement. Look at your new door and hole in there.
Is that gonna be, is that the bridge?
It is, so they helped us order it last week.
Okay.
Best to get an ID. Discussion.
I have that email. Read that email.
Nine, what? D David?
Yes.
Okay, we'll find it. Here's my motion to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of adding an item, agenda item to buy a two-way radio for the ACO vehicle under RCC eight A and an agenda item to approve the purchase of a new door under GL nine D.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. Anyone here to take advantage of this time? Anybody out there? Okay, on approval of minutes.
I'm going to move to approve the minutes of the October third, two thousand twenty-three Commission's regular meeting as presented.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. UT.
I'm going to move to approve the UT report as presented.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. Miller, I saw on there. Anything to add?
No, other than I'm multitasking today. I've got two Zoom meetings going at once, so you may hear some background noise. The LUPC is having a public hearing on a metallic metal mine at Pickett Mountain, so.
Okay, all right. So moved in seconded. Miller has nothing to add. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed by unanimous. Review and approval of the UT twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget.
For clarification, this is your proposal to legislature?
Yes.
This is just, okay, so this won't be your budget per se and be whatever you, before they get it, correct?
This is what I have to submit to them, and then they approve it, yeah.
Miller, anything to add or?
No, it has to be submitted before November seventh.
I'm going to move to approve the UT twenty-four, twenty-five budget as presented.
All right. Moved in seconded. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Are unanimous. Review and approval of the two-year order, small rural agreement between the County and Hancock and the Town of Waltham for one seventy-nine, Route one seventy-nine, Fletcher's Landing.
Commissioners, the document that you have in front of you, the dates are wrong. When I, when I updated the new amounts, I neglected to change the dates. So I've sent this back to the Town of Waltham to get it revised, so. It's a four thousand two hundred dollar increase in the price. My request today would you acknowledge the increase and you're in agreement with that, and we'll postpone the rest of it until we get a corrected document back from Waltham.
It's just general consensus, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, then we'll take action on it later.
Yes.
Great, Miller, thank you.
Commissioners, on the executive session for Three Rivers, do you need me there present for that? And if you do, what time will that be? And I will leave my other Zoom meeting and try to get in there.
I mean, I invite him because that's traditionally how it's been. I mean, that's what you asked for, but that's up to the review.
Steve, this is a UT director.
Yeah, it would be valuable, Miller, to be present.
I'd have to be in person.
Our attorney said it would be valuable, Miller, to have you present for that discussion.
Well, probably get to executive session.
I guess.
In person.
Yeah, what time, what time would you need me in there?
Oh, see, it's at the end before the union negotiations, so. What do you think, Paul?
I think. I think an hour.
If you go here at nine thirty.
Okay.
That's up to you.
I'll be there.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Airport. Request approval of Black Bear Business Recovery Policy and Public Conservation Incorporated exhibit agreement, and the chair has signed. So moved. Seconded. Moved in seconded. Leroy, you have anything to add or Michael?
No, this is just, it's a renewal. They've been here for a couple of years putting a advertisement up on the walls, where you make a little money.
Okay, moved in seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You both. It's like unanimous. Discussion of Airport Advisory Committee's recommendation to the Hancock County Commissioners related to the proposed Grand Mountain Solar Project and solar lease between the County and O Solar.
I'm going to move to accept and approve the recommendations of the Hancock County Bar Harbor Airport Advisory Committee and to vote not to endorse or proceed with a solar lease proposal due to the points highlighted in the letter from William Everhart, Chairman of the Hancock County Bar Harbor Airport Advisory Committee, to the Hancock County Commissioners.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. Any further discussion or comments? Leroy?
No, I have, I got, I have no comments.
My only comments are, I wholeheartedly agree with my concerns have been reiterated in, in the county's, in the, not the county's, the airport advisory commissions letter.
You concur with that, Leroy?
I, I do, yeah. You know, I, it's, it's tough to look at not, you know, not getting the revenue, but I think, I think the cons outweigh that.
Is there a chance for a smaller version that would fit, that would give you some revenue?
One of my concerns in that area is noise. I really am concerned about removing that natural growth and having that natural noise barrier between the airport and the neighbors, especially the neighbors across the river. That's my real, that's, that's my real concern. Trying to be a good neighbor here also in this.
Yeah, I, you know, one of those jets lights off. You know, now there's a big buffer, a few hundred feet of buffer.
Right.
All gone.
Right, you know, mainly, and I'm thinking more even just sitting running the APU on the ramp, you know. You know, the end of the runways is not, you know, there's, there's nothing there for a buffer, but at least with the APUs on the ramps and taxiing, that's a little bit of a buffer there.
Okay, so moved in seconded. Any further discussion, comments? Michael, everybody's all right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you're unanimous.
I'm going to move to approve the lease agreement between Hancock County and the Main Coastal Flight Center Incorporated as presented and authorized the chair to sign.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. Leroy, anything to add there?
No, this is the renewal of that office space in the terminal building is what this is.
Okay, we're all set. Michael? All in favor?
Aye.
Are unanimous. EMA? EOC project update.
Morning, Commissioner. Thanks for the invitation to come and speak with you this morning. Yes, I appreciate it. You look pleased. I was online and I heard your brief conversation in your last meeting that you gave the invitation to me, so. I'm not sure where you, to pick up, or would you just like an update from me or?
Well, I'm going to reiterate my concerns. I'm very disappointed the state appears to be dragging the feet on negotiation for a piece of property that we've been talking about sharing with them. And because the clock is ticking on your project, and refresh me again, did that start first of June, the clock?
It did.
It started first of June?
Yes.
Okay, we were.
So we were awarded in November, but the meter didn't start running until June.
But it's been running since June, and here we are, four and a half months later, and, and still we don't know where we're going to build. I really think it's time that we start making a conscious effort to find another piece of property and see if we can't get something done this fall.
Sorry to be very candid, I, I sort of had a dual track approach to this is, you know, seeing those negotiations occur, but to see it coming quietly, continuing with due diligence, you know, on the other side, on the potential for either acquiring existing, pre-existing commercial property that may be available to us, or, or a site, a lot location we're about to build. And a number of those that are potentially viable for us.
Okay, so let's go to work on it. Let's, let's do it. Maybe we let Jeremy know that we can't wait.
Judge Young from the state.
Jeremy Gray from the state.
I remember.
Yep. And tell him that, like I say, unless we buy a pre-existing, if we buy a lot, wooden lot, at minimum, we always try to at least get a lot ready for something in the spring. We should be hiring an architect now and designing that building.
If, if we're going to go the route of new, new construction, I mean, my, just to be very candid, my preference is a pre-existing commercial facility that we might renovate, just because it's going to save us financially and also in time.
So if you have one, let's have a discussion, you know, some point about what it is and where it is and so on, and pursue that.
Yes.
If those don't pan out, then we have plan B. Let's do that sooner than later. I'm really, really concerned.
And, and I appreciate your advocacy and your concern as am I. I'm not in panic mode. I mean, straight away I can tell you, we still don't really even have a contract from the state yet. So they're, they're, they're just as, it doesn't threaten our project anyway, it's just administrative, but they're just behind it.
So contract for what?
For the funding. So the money can be made from the federal government and the state and then.
I think they start the process without, without standing one down, you know, that process.
It's just the process. And, and for your other commissioners, for your sake, and you're probably aware, but just to offer a reminder publicly, that you commissioned an ad hoc committee consisting of myself, Christian Clark, Administrator Crocker, D. Granger's been involved in that at Dennis Falls as well, just to help me in this process, so. I'm not, I'm not working it this solo.
So you're not panicked? We're worried about, or what I'm hearing we're worried about is that the clock is ticking and the state's not moving, and you're not worried about that in any way?
I'm certainly concerned. I, I want sooner rather than later. Our, our end date is May, the end of May, twenty twenty-six.
And that, that means project completion?
Project completion.
And that is.
We really have a year.
We do, and so I don't want to downplay it. I don't want to take it for granted, you know, every day goes by, another day is gone by. So I'm anxious to have something, you know, confirmed and underway soon as we can.
And if we're talking about an existing building, we're in good shape, because that's, but if we're talking about building from scratch on a wooden lot, we don't have an architect, and we don't have a builder, we don't have plenty of, I mean, Andy's got a pretty good concept of what he wants the building to look like, still going to be designed. And that's, it'll take time.
To, in my mind, I would budget two years for that.
Yes.
And, and I think that's.
We don't have two years.
Yeah, we do.
No, we have, we have one year, seven and a half months. Clock started ticking last June.
No, this year, just this past year.
That's what I mean. Right, we have until twenty-four, May of twenty-four to finish.
No, May of twenty-six to finish.
Six. Where's the two years?
It's a three-year period of performance.
You've got three.
Three years, yes, for sure.
What the hell is this, two years?
So we had mentioned the two-year period because the state, if nothing had occurred, then looks to the third year, if I recall.
Correct.
About what to do with those funds and potentially could ship them elsewhere, I think.
Right, we all get them there.
Also, we had two years to come up with a plan, three years to argue.
Yes, at, at the outside, but I certainly don't want to take advantage of that two-year.
That gives you.
Yeah, that's why, that's exactly why I, I think, I'm not panicked mode till we get close to two years.
And, and again, I don't want to delay it at all, but I, I agree, and I'm not necessarily, I think, you know, my master's in Augusta and, and in, in Boston, you know, FEMA in Boston, which is where this is being administered. They're very comfortable with our process that Dave, they actually came and gave a visit here to us, they toured the potential sites and facilities. They're in agreement with what, what we identify as our priorities for local reconstruction and renovation of an existing facility. That's our route, so we're, we're, we're in, we're in good shape. We've done everything that we can.
So your recommendation is plugway and that we're going and, you know, we'll keep this up to date.
That, that's really it. I'm remaining open, open-minded. If, if the state, you know, main judicial branch and, and you're actually with District Attorney's Office and EMA, and that project goes forward, then that's great, but if not, then, you know, I'm not wasting time starting from, from, you know, the very beginning. Should we have to provide for ourselves? And I'm indifferent whichever it is. I mean, if it's, you know, if we're leveraged, someone else has a lot of advantage to that financially and every other way. But if we have to go so, there's advantages to that as well, so.
Good. Thank you for the update, I mean.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the Deer Isle Causeway Bridge and Causeway Bridge status.
Yes, thank you. So this project, the jury started about two and a half years ago, initially with the Deer Isle Causeway, has really evolved and progressed to the point where it's really time for me to come and approach you with this. And the most recent development, I'll start at the end and work my way backwards, the most recent development is the federal government has allocated fifty billion dollars for bridge infrastructure across.
Fifty billion?
Billion? Yes.
Not for this bridge?
Not for, no, just across the country, so in theory, each, each. Yeah, so in theory, each state gets a project. And really our goal locally here originally is to make sure that the Deer Isle Bridge is named project, identified project, so.
Is that a complete replacement?
It would be a complete replacement. That's the point.
Could do something about the Causeway also.
That is actually already underway, so, so just to go back now. We initially had this initiative to advance the cause of repairing or replacing the Causeway. And that was sufficiently successful with state and federal officials, where that is actually now underway. They have funded some engineering study money, and they're actually taking the preliminary steps to, to see that actually happen for the cause.
Was that widening and raising?
Widening and raising, yes. So we were sufficiently successful with that. We decided, well, all along our goal is the Causeway and the bridge, that's the critical infrastructure components. And then we started on the bridge. Now, what's my role in this specifically? All I can really speak to is the public safety aspects of this. With respect to, you know, the socioeconomic impacts in the region, the area, the state of Maine's economy, which would be significant, that's represented by the handout that I gave you that was prepared by Stonington's economic developer. It would be considerable, but that's not really in my lane, so to speak, so. My, my role in this is, is sort of done, is I've made the case for the public and the agencies to advance this based on merits strictly concerning public safety. And now the other parties have got litigation involved to take the next step. So politically, what we're seeking is a hundred percent unanimity from local and regional officials to get behind this and, and, and to lobby, for lack of a better word, you know, our elected and appointed officials, DOT, the governor's office, our congressional delegation and so on, to make sure that Maine's priority for this type of money that's just become available is this project.
Who are we competing with? Any idea?
I have no idea, but you know, there's never any shortage of bridge projects in the state of Maine that could easily chew up this money, so. You know, DOT has it on the list of bridge replacements that are.
I think it's interesting, it's just the last one of these designs that's still standing, right? Something like that.
Uh, yes, it has a very long history, you know. If you've ever seen the Tacoma Narrows Bridge, yeah, so. Right, the exact same engineering and, and all of that, so, and, and the state has mitigated that with, with all sorts of initiatives over the many years, over the many decades. It's eighty-five year lift, eighty-four year lifespan. So it was flawed from its start, and, you know, it's actively managed. It's very expensive for the state to maintain the bridge, everything from the paving to structural integrity. And DOT's iTunes recently used, just about a month ago, was, it's a forever bridge, it was like a well-done Hancock bridge was, until it started to fail. When the cables started to snort, they didn't have a choice but to see it replaced, and so trying to get out ahead of that.
Anniversary that opened this last week, this week? Twenty-nine? Nineteen twenty-nine, I think.
Uh, I can't answer that.
I think that's what it said. Eighty-four years, it says here.
Yes.
Eighty-four?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty, yes.
And, and Stonington, you know, is the largest producing lobster.
Anywhere.
Anywhere, and.
Yeah, and, and that's.
Certainly wasn't in nineteen twenty-nine.
Yeah, so I don't want to misstate or, or misquote anyone, but that's exactly your, your reasoning, just that you don't give the Causeway and the bridge where it had a commission, even temporarily, the fleet is going to take their landings elsewhere. And once they do that, it's never going to return to Stonington and fundamentally change, you know, the lives of people on the islands and on the mainland as well. There, there's some other interesting facts that we, we've come across, fifty percent of teachers at the schools
Go across that bridge.
Go across that bridge every day, so. And approximately twelve hundred other members of the workforce as well. So what I would suggest, if you don't mind me requesting, is a letter of support, I think maybe to the DOT Commissioner or Edward, the governor's office, from yourself, speaking of that, and how you would like to see this prioritized.
So my sense is a draft of that, something you could draft, you and Michael could draft and come back to us for for signature or something, or do you want to patch it prior?
No, I think that would, that would suffice, and that would be very welcome, so thank you for being.
Yeah, I think that's, that way we, we know what the letter says and we signed it.
Yes.
Is that something that would be done at my meeting or?
Absolutely, yeah.
That sound like a good plan or?
It does. No, that's perfectly fine.
So, okay, thank you. This was interesting.
Well, good. Well, thank you, and I appreciate your support in it, so.
Yeah. Now, if I served on the lobster, what is it? Forgot. I call it Lobster Commission, but the, what it's called.
The Fisheries Commission.
Yeah, the, no, the lobster, what is it called? Lobster Marketing Collaborative.
Okay.
And the numbers coming out of Stonington and how important Stonington is for this fishery is incredible.
Yeah, if you'll, I'll go to you in another thirty seconds, this entire project came about, both the Causeway and the bridge, regionally for all the communities on the Blue Hill Peninsula, I think you shout out Mr. Alan Cratch here, who's a resident of Brooksville, who is serving in capacity as the resiliency coordinator for these types of projects, and he and I, going back about two and a half years ago, you know, beginning to speak about what are the greatest risks mitigation-wise relating to climate and sea level rise and things like that in Hancock County. I had the document ready to go, our hazard mitigation, and I just said, you've already done this, and I have a list that I can hand you. We started from there. The number one priority that we identified was the Deer Isle Causeway.
Yeah.
So this, this has evolved to this point, so his, his work has really been instrumental in advancing this on behalf of not only the municipal communities, but all Hancock County. So thanks for coming out this morning.
Can I add a word?
Sure.
Thank you. It's a difficult act to follow. My name is Alan, A-L-L-E-N, K-R-A-T-Z with a record. I come from Brooksville, as Andy mentioned, and I'm on the Sea Level Rising Climate Change Committee. But I'm actually here as the co-coordinator of Blue Hill Peninsula tomorrow. We are a forum of elected and appointed officials from nine towns on the Blue Hill Peninsula. We meet once a month, the Azun, to talk about issues such as this. And I just want to reiterate that although this may seem to be a Stonington and Deer Isle issue, this pertains to the entire peninsula. One of the statistics that's not on the handout that you have is the peak traffic volume period going across the bridge. You might want to guess what it is. Some people guess six AM. That's actually four AM. It's people coming from our part of the peninsula, north of Deer Isle, north of Stonington, coming down to, coming down to Stonington to work on the, work, work on the lobster by the stern. So this has been very much an important issue all across, when we've had community meetings, we've had representation from not simply Deer Island, Stonington, Sedgwick, Brooklyn, Castine, Knobscot, Brooksville, Blue Hill, Stonington, and I wonder if the, for Dr. Max.
Foxport.
And Foxport as well. And as you write a letter, as Andrew mentioned, it's very helpful to also copy our, our delegation in Washington. They participate in all of the meetings, Blue Hill Peninsula tomorrow, they're very aware of this. So they are essential to also providing the funding, even the main DOT would be the primary party and governor's office to move this forward. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate your, your support of the head of all of our communities.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. When you mentioned the importance of the peninsula, it's a very vital state, as I've gone again, going back to the lobster days, that's, it's incredible.
And, and that's been readily acknowledged with the folks in Augusta and the federal delegation. They've all been very supportive, but we need to actually designate this as a primary project.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Especially with somebody aware of how to do math. Opened in thirty-nine, not twenty.
I didn't hear you.
Eighty-four years, then have opened in thirty-nine, not twenty.
Nineteen thirty.
And?
It's nineteen thirty-nine, I don't know.
Nineteen thirty-nine.
I, I'm focused on you for a minute.
And this one, it's in twenty-nine. Somebody agreed to that.
Thank you. RCC. First up is accept the resignation of nine-one-one dispatcher Caleb Whitney, effective October thirteenth.
So.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. I didn't add.
Another one, huh? What's it leaving now for vacancies?
I have three names.
Three, out of eleven.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous.
The next item here, I asked to have put on, I do. The next item here, I asked to have put on, uh, I've been working with Michael on the ACO. Uh, getting his vehicle ready for him, the ones that given to him by the sheriff's department. And, uh, one of the things that Michael and I talked about was giving him some kind of communication beyond his cell phone. And, uh, we'd like to know if you could find a way to approve his use of coming onto your radio system. The ACO for his official duties as ACO officer.
No, I think we'll just have to figure out which frequency, uh, it's going to be, the sheriff's frequency or statewide car to car. I think the sheriff's frequency is probably the best because it has the coverage for all the areas that he travels. I know Michael and I talked about this briefly. I don't think it's going to be a major issue. Obviously, we'll have to educate him on radio etiquette. Just, it's not going to be an administrative thing just because of all the other things that go on on the frequency, but I support these. You know where he is, or he's has ability to reach us.
So this is something you and Michael can work out with Dan. So, we got a quote from Brown for a radio and say, uh, it's got the P twenty-five compatibility that's required.
That would be, yeah, you have to work on it. Although, I guess, our radio is.
Michael, did you give them a copy?
So, one of my questions is. I know most towns, animal control officers don't have a police radio.
So.
Is that really?
It's only a police radio if you're a policeman, it's a radio. I, I think it's communication. So my own town's ACO, he wants to be trained, they recommended contact the fire department. Get a spare radio that they might have laying around so you can call somebody on it. We, we just go down. All of the local firehouse, certain, uh, and, uh. Where, you couldn't, because, yeah, because the county fire clerk is owned by the fire association. He is a county employee, working field, he goes, goes pretty sketchy places. I think there are, there are some, some out there, I think. Because I think there's the channel is most logical, you don't want as well try to get a new radio frequency just for the use of an ACO. Once a year, that's, you may have existing system.
And handheld would work for this?
Uh, they're very low, they're very low wattage.
Yeah.
We have difficulty now with, we're ready to five watt radios. They're, they're very limited unless you have clear sight, Peter Tower there. And on the fire service, we have. I have, I know, my own fire department, we can look at each other if either end of the scene, you can't communicate. I think trucker, car radio would give him better.
I think, I think even this is probably one.
Yeah, the, the vehicle radio is a good one.
I think, I think he quoted forty-one or something.
Well, my only advantages were spending this kind of money on a new radio system for a little car. But.
Yeah, but it goes in every curve you know, off.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's literally any, any radio that, that qualifies.
A hundred watts, sixty-five hundred dollars.
So, it was like, they're my masses.
About thirty-five, thirty, thirty, thirty.
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Thirty-eight.
That's pretty cheap.
Compared to the hundred watts.
You're a, you're a, five thousand for all the one town.
And for the record, Brown's Communication does all, all radio work. It's a sole source provider for service in. Equipment, correct? I'm going to move that we authorize the county administrative purchase. A mobile radio from Brown's Communication in the amount of three thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars. And to pay for it from Apple phones.
Seconded, uh. The, uh. Okay, so this is going to be outfitted in that car. Uh, this includes insulation and everything. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, here's.
Thank you, both.
Jail, uh, first up is discussion regarding a jail transport van.
Yes, it comes in right in time. I saw the email from the ACO. Just see, I'm going to swap in the vehicle back with you. He's been using one of my transport vans. It's come back today. It has some mechanical issues. Got to address.
Are we going to be able to do a trade-in on that with this?
I, I don't know that answer. Um, I thought Sheriff, he, he was the one that had enough to find a vehicle and such. Um, so here to propose this vehicle, the only thing I can, we can locate this. Nearby, on ground, available.
This Pacifica is the equivalent of a caravan?
That's what they're saying, yeah. It's kind of, it's the blind doors on the side, such. Is. For money.
What other kind of outfitting has to have to make it appropriate for use?
Excuse me?
What, what other kind of changes to?
We'll just have to put a cage in it. We have to purchase a cage for it and transfer the, one of the radios we have. The other vans are over a hundred thousand miles. It's two thousand fifteen and two thousand eighteen that are running now.
I'm going to move to approve the purchase of a two thousand twenty-three Chrysler Pacifica Touring L from Dallas Auto Mall. Some forty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and pay for it from the Apple phones.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. And this is the, I would take your money, uh, with your, your vehicle.
We, we're not, what, really, I, I like this, oh, we'll drive. That's the biggest thing that we, we need. We're transporting. We're not high-speed pursuit. We're not, we don't need any, anything that's.
You got a hundred kilo on the current vehicle, right?
Yep.
How, how old is that one?
Two thousand fifteen is the oldest one.
So, you know, it's not like you're really putting that much miles, right?
No, we're not, no. But we have, we're starting to now with the thing is, is when we go to the prison, they tell us when we transport. We just can't. We got to be there on their timeframe, so we get down there for the storm coming home, which happened last year, from the time we got back into the storm. Let you go, you guys back, but, yeah. Oh, we're driving through this, our answer. And when it comes to. And we do the vehicle, I don't, we've never had anything other than a Dodge Caravan.
Oh, really? And then can we see if you can do a trade-in?
Yeah, I'll talk to Sheriff, yeah.
No, let me reduce the cost, right?
Yeah, I'm just saying, because I'd rather do that than.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Dennis.
So this Chelsea thing is, we ready to move on to short term?
Yeah, sure, it's sure.
Okay, then I'm going to move to approve the proposed short-term agreement, Chelsea Howard, to provide medical services at the jail. Compared with the understanding of a amended longer-term agreement to be brought back to the commission and lay the date for the commission, the commission's review and approval. Seconded.
And I have a signed, first, he signed the agreement.
Was it, is it all free or just a chair?
It's just a chair.
I gotta add that into, and for the chair to sign.
Okay, and this one is a six-months agreement, is it?
It says six months or till future agreements approved by all parties.
I think it's certainly our goal to have that done.
Yes, sir. And they know that.
And, and it begins August, uh, October first.
Yes, you do.
Okay, is that your, that's your motion?
Yes.
And that was the second?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, here's.
Sarah Willey's a longer.
Nope, she's still going to be the six months till we can get a secure contract.
Okay, so I'm going to move to approve the proposed short-term agreement, Sarah Willey, to provide mental health services in the jail, as presented with the understanding of an amended longer-term agreement. Be brought back to the commission, lay the date, the commission's review and approval for the chair to sign. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. And is that one similarly dated?
It's a six. No, it'll be first, but I do not have a sign. Do you want me to have her sign it or bring it to you?
I mean, that's up to your preference, I guess. I'll be sure at this point that she's.
Yeah, she's got all her verbiage and everything that she's.
Yeah, well, and if it changed, I would have to sign the other one. You'd have to come back. And, and that is a, that is a six-months agreement also.
Also, yep. It's that November first.
Start November first, okay? So, is that your motion?
Yes.
And your, your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, here it is.
This is going to be a major step for the jail, for the health service.
Well, hopefully. Okay, then we should have copies.
Yeah, we'll give all signs of you.
Okay. And then we have the item that should, you, we added.
The jail. We've had some issues after the jail, um, stated in the emails I sent out. Trying to find a way to add security and safety to staff and. Individuals that work, that are maybe not health price. Gives them an avenue that staff is going, don't have to. Open doors during trade pickup, trade delivery, which has been creating issues with our staff. Staff have been assaulted last month. Just trying to find something that's the same door, fits the same frame, um, the doors, just replacing, going to hang on the hinges. It's got a tray entry, so open the tray up, hang the tray in.
So who are we getting it from now?
XQ, um, Xactitude, it's, they were positioned that installed that locks originally in the jail. But they don't remember what they dealt with.
Spilling.
EX, AC, TI, TUD.
How much, how much?
Thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
That's big, and, and that's going to solve the problem?
It's not going, it's going to, it's going to assist in a, in a situation. It's going to assist us to be able to. Retrieve the stuff that, you know, have, have contact, you know, have something physical, which we're trying to avoid.
So, uh, down the road, what we don't have, this, suddenly this individual, same state of problems, is it going to? Still, you see it still as a benefit later on to have that place?
Yeah, we've had, we've had this situation with other individuals in the last year, year and a half. It's the same. It's, it's not a fix for one individual. It's something that we, we, once I've been talking about this, trying to find out. Other facilities are doing the same, going the same route, and then the health status remains, when pressure is something to grow. You see something, we have a little safety for everybody of all.
It's crazy that we have to do this, but.
We never expected, when the jail was built, no jail was expected to be, to be, you know. Tenemental even in all cases.
I'm going to move to approve the purchase of a door from Xactitude for thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars and pay for it from the fabric. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. And that's a legitimate ARPA expense, Michael?
So again, I'm just talking about non-revenue enforcement. Will we approve it? Sign to approve? Vote or?
Take care of it.
So, moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions?
How long is it going to take for it to?
That was the question I had. They just, they needed approvals quickly, so, that's right. As I, yesterday, I hope within thirty days they may have this.
Oh, hopefully the individual gets transferred.
Oh, one hundred percent, yes. This is for a long-term.
Your staff.
And the staff is going to. Appreciate.
Okay, we'll have to continue to deal with this, so. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Dennis, thank you. Maintenance, Sheriff's Office entry update.
Yes, morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Uh. Hammond, uh, they discovered a much thicker pad than they thought, but they got Durwin. And they're prepping the site with, uh, a transom and grates right now. Uh, removing the main slab, they did discover that the petition wall, which contains the entry door. And two half walls, which is not a load-bearing wall, but it's now deep flanking. Got, uh, engineer, I think, Hany, coming today to look at that and see what kind of corrective action needs to take.
What was, what was the purpose of the wall that it was?
Uh, to keep, to, uh, there's the entry doors in. It was, it's that half wall with the concrete and then the, the brown aluminum. Aluminum frame, the, the door that's out under the canopy, that whole wall that's not structural, but. It's there to plug the hole and give us a door. Give us a plug.
Going to require a new door?
Potentially. We'll, we'll see what the, what their assessment is today.
We've always wondered what that door will last for the rest of its life, right?
Well, yes, and it's, uh. Uh, kind of, uh, one of those situations where, when are we going to have a better chance to address it? But the question is, to what extent we have to go to, to fix the problem? The whole section? Uh, or just that part beyond?
But it was only fifty years old.
Yeah, I think nineteen sixties.
Sorry, Dennis, did you say there was a new architect involved?
He's, he's one of the, uh, people on, uh, Louis Amop's Lester Peters.
Okay.
This isn't an architect's agenda?
No, it's an engineer, actually. Part of the team.
Yeah, so will, nothing to do by?
No, no, just to, just FYI, I want to keep your praise of the action. This may end up being a, a change order that we present at some point. Uh, in addition to the base price. Uh, and other than that, they've made pretty good progress. They found some of those steps twenty inches thick, but it's out of there.
Boy, comfortable.
Yep. And the retainer wall, the plumbing that was in the slab, all seemed to be in good shape, so really fortunate there. There's some question below the grade of the steps, what kind of shape that wall would be in. Is to be, uh, in good shape. We won't have to do too, too much to it.
How would you use the paving situation for us to discuss?
Uh, the paving situation was, uh, I, I had not heard back from any of the vendors that. We talked to. I since have heard back from, uh, Jared from Dugas. So he's expecting a price from him, but we decided to handle that as a change order. At the end, whether we continue with, with, uh. We know that in the base price, the excavation and the repairing of the, the asphalt will take place. But our question was, why not resurface the whole area? We have that price. Maybe we'll have the other. Uh, price by the next meeting, I hope.
Kind of the.
But as a change order, we add it. And take, we can take the repair piece out and insert the whole figure, or we can leave it in. And make the paving, the next stage afterward. So it gives us more flexibility. Right. And, uh. So we're hoping that the next couple of weeks, we're formed up in foreign concrete.
What's happening with the gym?
Uh, I haven't heard too much back. We're still going to dig rawls, crunching the numbers to, to come up with that, uh, price and. Scope of work is pretty, pretty basic, but it is kind of. Uh, there's a lot of parts. uh, there's a lot of parts in there. We're looking at a couple of different technologies. As you probably, uh, the, Mr. Clark knows, and you might be aware, all of the plumbing fixtures are mechanical. In other words, they're plastic parts that you can't hire yourself with, and there's no, I like, they use like, uh, uh, pneumatic diaphragm and like a plunger to shoot air into about pilot acting. And all of this stuff is now twenty-some years old, apparently. We did one, uh, sample area, I'd say, I believe, Seablock, where we installed, uh, a new product, an electronic valve, which is battery operated and electronic actuator as well. It seems to be working beautifully and gives us a little more flexibility. Uh, it doesn't, these valves that we have personally, Acorn, you really need a plumber to rebuild and balance these devices. And the electronic pieces are a little more, well, they're modular, so anyone can just replace a section or not, so that looks to be something that might be, if the cost is feasible, a good replacement and set us up well for maintenance and repair in the future going forward, so. Uh, we'll be interested to hear back on.
Rugged enough to take the jail with iron?
Uh, let's hope so. There, you know, what, what is? People have been on destruction and that's what happens. So, we're trying to keep it as inspired as like this weekend.
Okay.
When I, as soon as I have more information, I'll be, uh, sending you your back.
On another quick note, Michael, uh, as I understand it, civil deputy is, is not, is not working his vehicle. It's not being used by him. Are they using that with the frat time people? Or is that available for transfer to the maintenance department? I'll have to double check with the sheriff.
I did talk to the sheriff.
What, what'd he say?
He said that, uh, his plan is to send it up to the garage and get the electronics removed. And he'll let us know when it's available for use. He said some, you know, mid-month, of course, it's mid-month already. But, uh.
Great, okay.
I think that was the plan, and I had to talk to Andy about what it takes to get the registration swung over. EMA, yes.
Oh, what they do?
Whatever reason.
Well, I mean, I got the information from him in terms of who he contacts with the state, so we do do it through the state, but he has contacts that he uses that will do that, so.
I know you registered the title to the county.
So, they, that was a question I asked in there under, what I understand, Hancock County, that's all. It's not him, uh, so we will have the title, we title.
I don't know.
Those, all done?
Yep.
Needs to be just a point here.
Okay, so we're, uh, set. Next up is, uh, executive session pursuant to MRS A four oh five six C and E consultation with legal counsel for the county concerning the tax incurred financing and credit enhancement ruined by three rivers. So, moved. Seconded. Moved and seconded. Uh, I'll also make point that, uh, been requested that, uh, three rivers, uh, be able to speak with us, I guess, and we've decided after, is that? Okay, so, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we'll take a short break and go to executive session.